And Meter, they're going to be on this.
All right, we want to welcome everyone tonight to the Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District for Monday, September 25th, 2017. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. Somebody like to read or make a motion for approval of the agenda? I move that the agenda of Monday, September 25th, 2017, Board of Education Annual Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and our action. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, and this is a roll call vote.
Director Ann Hall?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Chacobo?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
President Lavery?
Aye.
With that, we'll move into Board Governance, and Laurel Day.
This is just approving the minutes from the last meeting. Requires a voice vote.
So this is a voice vote. Are there any questions from the minutes from the last meeting? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the minutes from September 11th, 2017 signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same. Seeing no opposition, the motion passes. Next fiscal year 2016-17 financial highlights, we'll turn that over to you, Steve.
Thank you, President Lavery, Board of Education, Dr. Buck. Here are the fiscal 17 highlights. We have a slide showing the overall revenues of the district at $270 million, and by far the largest is our general fund, no surprise. And then after the general fund is a safe fund in terms of the size, so you have multiple funds that we have for multiple purposes. Our expenses, our actual expenditures are very close, a little bit lower in aggregate than our revenues, but you'll see the same funds, the same relative sizes, and I think one of the reasons why our expenditures are a little bit lower than our revenues would be related to our cash reserve levy in the general fund that we've been using to build the reserves there. So we have spent less than we have received in the general fund as a result of the cash reserve levy. That would be a large part of the explanation there. A breakout of our sources of revenue for the general fund all by itself, and you can see that the vast majority of the monies are coming in from the state and local property taxes with the federal government kicking in about 8% or so. The actual expenditures of the general fund is largely wages and benefits, about 82% of our general fund is in wages and benefits, which is very much in alignment to other public schools in the state of Iowa, no surprises there. And our reserve position of our general fund has improved substantially, both in a cash position as well as our unspent balance position. You'll see that our spending authority has gone from 7.1 to 11.1 million dollars in one year, so that is a sizable increase, and we're from, we're at just a little bit more than $31 million in general fund balance or fund cash balance at this time. Here it is in percentage perspective to give you an idea, and I know that we've had conversations recently about a board goal around our fund balance and our spending authority balance in the general fund. And that blue line, those two blue lines, the bottom one is 5%, the top one is 10%. If you look at fiscal 17, you'll see we just catch both the authority on the low end of the board goal spectrum, but within the board goal arena now at over 5%. And then, of course, our cash ending fund balance is substantially higher, it's approaching 16%, and 20% is the max. So we're actually, we've dialed down our cash reserve levy in fiscal 18. Because of that, we knew it was going to happen, and we'll be, we're in a great, a really nice financial position with the general fund. Solvency ratio is mimicking, just validating once again, a general fund concept, which is very positive, going up in a nice pattern. These are fund balances of our, all of our funds. The first one is the Activity Fund. You can see its fund balance at north of $3 million there. Our Safe Fund balance was high back in 2012, and it's been spent down here fairly substantially, but planfully. We knew that it was going to be going down, but big picture is this, if you want, if you want to see where we're at with the Safe Fund, we look all the way through the horizon to 2029, and we can see where we're at in that $55 million range of overall reserves in general, or I'm sorry, in the Safe Fund. So it doesn't, it's not available at this moment, it is available over time, and you can see how it slowly accrues over the years.
Steve, is that, that's the sunset? Of the Safe Fund?
Yes, thank you, thank you, John. It is the sunset of the Safe Fund at this time. It will end on December 31st of 2029.
Unless we have the legislature hopefully extend that for us, which we hope for.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Daycare Fund, solid balances there. Debt Service Fund, we use to pay principal and interest on our outstanding debt, solid there. Management Fund, used to pay for our unemployment, our early retirement, and our, most importantly, our insurance for property casualty, there. Pebble Fund, our Brick and Motor Fund, we'll be hearing more about our Pebble use of funds later on, but you can see solid balances there. Food and Nutrition Fund, solid balances, and our overall debt. You can see we have the capacity of $453 million in debt, and we have actually $112 million of debt at the end of fiscal 17, so we are well within the overall debt capacity of the school district. And that's it. So happy to answer questions if there are any.
Any questions for Steve? Gary?
Steve, what would you attribute the increase in our spending authority balance, the unspent balance?
Probably the largest single one would be our increase in our special education deficit. Alone, the special deficit is about 2.7, 2.8 million dollars higher than it was in fiscal 16. And you think intuitively deficit, not a good thing, but actually, it reflects two things. First of all, it is a revenue issue, not an expense issue. It is the underfunding for our special needs children, the weights that the state establishes are set too low. It is a statewide issue. We have many schools with large special education deficits. We are in the norm of reasonableness with our deficit here in Cedar Rapids. But because we went from a $3.7 million deficit in 16 to a $6.5 million deficit in 17, that one change all by itself has contributed almost entirely to the increase in our unspent balance. Other than that, everything else is pretty much in balance from the general fund perspective. Does that make sense?
To me, no.
Okay, let me add one little wrinkle, and we'll see if this helps.
Okay.
A deficit increase actually causes the authority position to improve. So if we have a deficit that grows deeper by 2.9, 2.8 million dollars, it actually causes the unspent authority position to rise by the same dollar amount of 2.8 million dollars. Does that help?
I understand, but shouldn't we be spending that, that unspent balance then to cover the expenses of the special?
Well, we are, we are in a position now, we have arrived at 5% unspent balance, 5%. And we are still in a position, while it's improved substantially, we are still in a position of narrow spending authority. Now, you can, is 5% sufficient for your home savings account for what you have for contingencies in the future? I would wager that some people might be a little bit concerned about having only a 5% reserve set aside. So that's where we are right now with the most important metric that we have in general fund reserves is the spending authority, which is still at 5%.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Steve, for all of your work on that, and I know the administrative team in your office have spent a lot of time to make sure that's where it's at, so we appreciate that. All right, next we're going to move on to the acceptance of the abstract of the election, which was just held. Would somebody like to read the motion for acceptance of the abstract? I move that the abstract of the election certified by the Lynn County Board of Supervisors for the regular school election held September 12th, 2017 be accepted. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, and this is a roll call vote.
Jansen?
Aye.
Director Chacobo?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Ann Hall?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Before we move on to our organizational meeting, and before this meeting is done, I do want to take a moment to publicly thank Director Keith Westercamp, who served on the Cedar Rapids School Board for 20 years. He had all of his children go through the Cedar Rapids Schools, his wife Todd in the Cedar Rapids Schools, his daughter-in-law still teaches in the Cedar Rapids Schools, and just a real shining star of service to the kids of Cedar Rapids. He also served for a number of years on the Iowa Association of School Boards, Board of Directors as well, which certainly has led, given a voice to all of the urban districts in the state of Iowa and that organization. So although Keith is not with us tonight, we do want to publicly thank him for all of his years of service, so. So with that, this is always a little bit of an awkward meeting, we actually switch, and the meeting that we just started is done, and we will turn it over to Laurel Day, the Board Secretary, to take on the opening of the next part of our organizational meeting. So Laurel.
All right, excuse me, I'd like to call it order the organizational and regular board meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District, September 25th, 2017. First on the agenda is the approval of the revised agenda. It is a revised agenda because of the removal of BA 18129, the SEAC membership, which will be coming back to you on October 9th, but will not be under consideration for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. All right, at this time, I would like to have the directors elect, come forward for their certificates of election and their oath of office. Right, I want to tweet the flag, say before you, thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you Nancy Humble, Jennifer Borchardine, and Gary Ann Hall solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
All right, next on the agenda is the election for Presiding Officer for the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to open up the nominations for the position of President of the Board of Directors. I'd like to nominate John Lavery. Are there any other nominations? If not, then I officially declare these nominations closed, and at this time I will ask you to vote by roll call instead of ballot. Director Ann Hall?
John Lavery.
Director Jansen?
John Lavery.
Director Chacobo?
John Lavery.
Director Humbles?
John Lavery.
Director Meisterling?
John Lavery.
Director Borchardine?
John Lavery.
Director Lavery?
John Lavery.
Congratulations, John Lavery, if you want to come forward. Raise your right hand, please. Do you, John Lavery, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will. Next, we'll have the election of Vice President. Are there nominations for Vice President of the Board? Kristin?
I'd like to nominate Nancy Humbles.
Are there other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed, and this will be a roll call.
Director Ann Hall?
Nancy Humbles.
Director Jansen?
Nancy Humbles.
Director Chacobo?
Nancy Humbles.
Director Humbles?
Nancy Humbles.
Director Meisterling?
Nancy Humbles.
Director Borchardine?
Nancy Humbles.
President Lavery?
Nancy Humbles.
Congratulations, Vice President Humbles, if you would come forward for the oath of office. Yeah, you do, please. Do you, Nancy Humbles, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will." Congratulations. Thank you.
So, voice, voice vote on interest statement?
There is no vote, it's just, well, yeah, there is a vote, isn't there? Yeah, it is just a voice vote.
That they're committed to?
Mm-hmm, that they'll complete the form and put it on file.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the conflict of interest statements, and all of us were provided with the conflict of interest statement that is due at the end of this meeting to the Board Secretary. So there is a voice vote on this, that we all understand that we are to provide the conflict of interest statement to Laurel and make sure that it's accurate and complete. So all of those recognizing that, in favor of that, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. All right, the motion passes. And next, this is information only, but the annual appointment of Board members to Board committees. I did email all of you about options for Board-appointed committees, and so we will not announce anything tonight, we won't have any of that decision tonight, but if you could let me know before the next meeting, that would be very helpful, so maybe even in the next week, and we will get those determined and made public at the next board meeting. Okay? Next, we'll continue with the superintendent's report, so Dr. Buck, we'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks, President Lavery. So last week, Kennedy High School launched a new approach to their annual fall open house. Organizers, organizers created an event to engage students and families with their school while connecting them with community, college, and career resources. In addition to information booths throughout the school, eight presentations by community organizations were held during the two-hour event. Topics included preparing for the financial realities of college and social media awareness for parents and teens. Representatives from more than 25 community organizations were present to provide invaluable information about community resources to our Kennedy students and families. Each year, our district participates in America Reads, a nationwide initiative to improve literacy in elementary-age students. Online registration is now open for community members to sign up to spend approximately 30 minutes reading to students through this opportunity. Registration deadline is October 1, and the events take place in our elementary schools on October 20. Books will be available from school libraries, or readers may bring a favorite story. This is a great way for community members to serve as volunteers and help spread the love of reading in our elementary schools. We have, this is, this is a pretty cool thing, this is worth getting on social media for if you're not on social media yet. We have launched a new social media storytelling series to showcase and celebrate the academic activities, relationships being developed, and the diversity of staff, families, and students that make our school district one, in which every student is supported in their academic, social, and behavioral growth. These stories are captured via photos, videos, and interviews of staff and students. Last week, we highlighted Erskine Elementary Schools. Are we putting up the young lady that wants to be a mermaid princess and wear high heels? That was, that was one of my favorites, anyway. But it's, it's worth taking a look at if you haven't, if you haven't seen it yet. Each week between now and the end of the year, we'll be highlighting a different school and focusing on the multifaceted experiences of students and staff. Follow us on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram, and search hashtag #OurStoriesCRCD to catch these stories. You can also find the weekly compilation of these stories at hashtag #OurStories on our website. This week, we'll be spotlighting Franklin Middle School, so. We have two exciting announcements that serve as a reminder of the dedication, passion, and expertise with, with which our staff serve our students. John O'Connor, science teacher and men's soccer coach at Jefferson, has received the High School Coach of Significance Award for the United Soccer Coaches and the High School Boys and Girls Advocacy Group. This award recognizes coaches who are focused on not only developing great soccer players, but who realize that athletics can teach invaluable life lessons, and who also place a premium on developing well-rounded and outstanding students, or citizens. And just a side note, the Crandic Marathon, if you're familiar, the Crandic Marathon was announced last week as a new marathon going from Cedar Rapids to Iowa City. I received an email from Mr. O'Connor within, I don't know, a couple of hours of that being announced, saying, "Hey, how can our kids get involved in water stations," or that kind of thing, in support. So just real-time example of that work. And then a hearty congratulations goes out to Gabby Granitido, math teacher at McKinley Middle School. Gabby is one of the four Iowa educators who have been named a state finalist for the nation's highest honor for kindergarten through 12th grade educators of math and science. As a finalist for the Presidential Awards of Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, Gabby is recognized as a leader in the improvement of math and science education and a role model for her colleagues and in her community. Iowa Department of Education Director Ryan Wise says of Gabby and the other three finalists, "These teachers are an inspiration to their students, colleagues, and communities. As Iowa grows its commitments to science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education, their leadership is especially important." So congratulations to Gabby.
That is great news. Congratulations to them. At this time, it is time for board comments or reports. Any board comments tonight? Gary?
A couple. First of all, I attended as a follow-up to what Dr. Buck said, to the open house at Kennedy, and it really was a great event. I went around and talked with many of the exhibitors. We had all of our local colleges co, Mount Mercy, University of Iowa were there, and, but so many of our labor organizations also, and they were all very, very pleased to be able to be there in attendance, and I was kind of towards the end of, I had some other activities before that, but towards the end of the, of the evening, but they said they had a good turnout. They had many people and parents, and so I commend Kennedy for moving in that direction. I think it was a very worthwhile and meaningful event. The other is, I just want to pass along, I don't know if any of you have, any of the other board members have seen, but I will forward the link, that the Department of Education did turn in the final Every Student Succeed Act application to the feds, and there is, they have a couple of page outline of that program. It's interesting, as I look through it, it mirrored so much of what we're doing here in this district, so I think we're, we're both moving in the right, the right direction as we move forward. So I'll send that link to Laurel, and, and she can pass it out for those of you that maybe haven't caught it, but it'll be about a month and a half before we see that, before the feds respond back.
Yeah, and just a quick follow-up to that, Dr. Dave Tilly, who's the Associate Director at the Iowa Department of Ed, he is going to be at our November board meeting to give us an update on the ESSA plan and allow us to ask questions, so we're excited about having him along. And Director Wise is coming in December to the state of the district, so it'll be good to see both of them.
That is great, that is great news, and I would just say, for the board to be, again, thinking about questions that you might have about ESSA, it's a good, a good time maybe to engage with some of our constituents about any questions that they might have as well moving into that November discussion. Are there any other board comments or reports? We do want to welcome Jennifer Borchardine to our table up here, the board table, so we've already had a chance to do some initial onboarding as a new board member, and we'll continue to do that, and welcome you to our humble little abode here, and we will have more opportunities for professional development as a board. The Iowa Association of School Boards will have their convention, as well as the Urban Education Network, a set of meetings that will come up in November in Des Moines, and Laurel will be sending us all out a link for that to confirm our plans. We encourage everyone on the board to attend if they can, for at least part of it, there's, there's great information, and whether you're brand-new or, you know, a veteran of multiple years, there's always something to learn, and I don't think any of us can ever understand school finance law enough, so there's, thank goodness, we have Steve Graham on staff here to help us out with that, so. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the communications, delegations, and petitions, and we've received one request to speak before the board tonight, and so Lawrence Wenkowsky, feel free to approach the podium, and I know you've done this multiple times, so Laurel Day will keep track of the five minutes, and if you could let us know your residing address, we appreciate that.
Lawrence Wenkowsky, 423 former Earl Road, Northeast. First of all, want to congratulate those who recently won their election. Annette, first thing I need to do, I need to clarification, clarify my position on comments during communications, delegations, and petitions, because I've known, I've done this to some of yous in the past, and at one point, I did believe that there should be back and forth conversation, however, I no longer believe that, and what I believe is that for agenda items, all questions need to be answered before the vote on that item, and for non-agenda items, they need to be answered in a public forum, like a memo posted right next to the meeting minutes. Board meetings are not the only public forum. And I also want to know what rules apply to public hearings, and then how do we clarify misstatements and misunderstandings in a quickly manner that someone may make up here? Because that could create a big problem. Everyone who addresses a school board does so with skills God gave them, and these skills vary, just like in our students. I have been told that sometimes I am not clear with what I am saying, which I know is true. What I don't understand is why board members fail to ask clarif, questions for clarifications. It states in Regulation 2021, Paragraph 3, Sentence 2, "In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public at board meetings except to clarify the nature of questions and comments." One of the things I've tried at hearings during conversations, or I'm tired of hearing at conver, with conversations and at board meetings, is that how everything we do is legal, even though no one's brought up the question of whether something is the legality of the issue. Annette, it's like, why do yous do this? You know, it makes it look like you're trying to hide something. Annette, you know, what makes something legal is, basically, it means it's permitted by law. There are multiple ways to accomplish something legally. Annette, and just because you do one way, and Todd Dorman, myself, or anyone else suggests doing something different, doesn't mean what we're suggesting is illegal, and we're not suggesting what you're doing is illegal. At the last boarding, board meeting, I made the following comments. One of my goals is not to criticize people, and later I said, "I would like to talk about how the board members and some administrators, you know, some of the administrators..." you know, some of the administrators, can make their communications easier. There are a few different ways you can doing with your email to help you so you are not responding or ignoring the emails. So after last meeting, I lost all respect for some people. During a conversation, I was accused of, that I was saying Mrs. Day did not respond to my emails or respond to my text messages, and the same thing with other staff members, which is the furthest thing from the truth. But I will admit, I have sort of expressed to Mrs. Day that, you know, with her communications, she doesn't have to email me back on Sunday nights or call me back for every time I leave her message, because that's just, you know, there's certain times for her to be with her family. Mrs. Day works for the superintendent. There's an issue between the two of us, it is a duty to address it, for him to address it with me, not board members. Mrs. Day does not report to the school board. You know, I enjoy discussing issues with people, and I can take criticism. However, a respectful conversation and to be polite and respectful, that's what I expect of a conversation. Even though I'm in a good place, in the future, if someone wants to belittle me, accuse me of things that are not true, take me, talk down to me, or try to bully me, I will not be as polite. I will leave the good place, go to midnight Texas, and deal with it appropriately. Thank you.
Well, just to clarify, Mr. Winklowski, since we can clarify according to the law, that Laurel Day as Board Secretary and Steve Graham as Board Treasurer do report to the board as well as to the superintendent. So I do just want to make that clarification. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. At this time, are there any board members that would like to pull any questions, any items on the consent agenda for question or further clarifications? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written due to the personnel report BA 18112? So moved. Second?
Second.
I'll vote.
Director Borcherting?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Laverty?
Aye. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the administration part of our agenda tonight, talking about Pebble projects and the updates for that. So we'll turn over to you again, Steve Graham. Thank you.
President Laverty, members of the board, Dr. Buck. Back in September of 2014, the voters, am I on? Can you hear me all right? I wasn't sure about that. The voters of our school district gave us support for an expansion of the Pebble levy to the state maximum $134. So we, at that moment in time, generate $3.5 million more than we have before. So each year, we receive $99 million precious, critical, needed resources for our facilities' repair and maintenance. So we're very thankful to the voters of our school district for supporting this. And in exchange for their support, we made them a promise. And I think what we have tonight with John Galbraith in the audience, who's going to make his way up here, John is representing our Buildings and Grounds Department. He has a slideshow of pictures to show you what we did in our summer vacation, maybe not so much a vacation for sure, John would echo that. But this is diligent work, hard work, and it is a promise that we have made, and this is year three of our promise that John will unfold for you. So, John.
Thank you, Steve. This is just kind of a quick snapshot of the year-three Pebble projects that were completed over the summer. Projects started right about June 3rd and were substantially complete no later than August 18th. There's a lot of hard work that goes into these projects from many different people and departments that make them successful in that 11-week timeframe. So this first slide here is kind of the non-glorious projects per se that a lot of people may not even notice, but are very, very important into the upkeep of our buildings. As you can see on the slide there, there was about 62,000 square foot of asphalt replacement that was done at four schools, Hiawatha Elementary, Kennedy High School, Nixon Elementary, and Pierce Elementary. There was also concrete repair done at those schools, in the matter of about 9,100 square feet that was replaced, and around 1,500 feet of new curb. Tuck pointing and repair, our buildings are old, and the outside of them being brick, that is very, very important maintenance for a couple of things, more than just aesthetics. There's a lot of things that deal with water issues and whatnot, so getting those re-tucked, pointed, and back in working condition is very, very important. Those projects took place at McKinley Middle School, Cleveland Elementary, Kenwood Leadership Academy, and Grantwood Elementary. Lastly, roof replacement projects, for the roof replacement took place at Grantwood Elementary, McKinley Middle School, Washington High School, and Taft and Harding Middle These next few projects are kind of the projects that everybody sees and hopefully says, wow, those really look nice. So I wanted to touch on those. This is the Johnson Cafeteria Flooring Replacement Project, and there's kind of a before shot there that doesn't show a whole lot, but you can kind of see the old VCT that I think had been there for right about 20 years, and then kind of the during phase of construction, kind of the part that I like, that it's fun for me to see, and then obviously the after product, which we've gotten a lot of compliments on that, and it really turned out very, very nice. That's an epoxy flooring system. It's kind of new to the district, but it gives us some different capabilities as far as looks. And the other nice thing about it, it is fairly a maintenance-free product, which is something that we always look into putting in when we do these projects.
So that's, John, that's the logo for Johnson?
Yes.
The flooring?
Yes, and that's one of the benefits of this product as well, is kind of the different things that we can do with it. You know, adding that logo is just kind of a little niche that can be added that people tend to like. Next slide here, this is the Garfield Flooring Replacement Project. So there was seven classrooms that received new flooring, along with two offices. So this is kind of a step-by-step process, is here's the before, that was removed, concrete was patched as needed, and the new was put in. Kind of basic here, but adding some new design, little things like that for an improvement are always nice. So the next two sets of slides here will be restroom upgrades. There was a total of six sets of restrooms that were done in the district this year. I've just kind of highlighted two of them. This is at Cleveland. And one of the main goals of these projects is to make them ADA compliant. So as you can see in the picture on the right there, these restrooms don't meet current ADA standards, so getting them to meet ADA standards is one of the major goals. So there's the before pictures, restrooms that were original to the building, and here's kind of the after picture. So these include new plumbing fixtures, new flooring, new ceramic tile wall coverings, new toilet partitions, new ceilings, and new LED lighting. The next slide here is Hiawatha, same thing here, all the new items are the same from Cleveland. Here's our before pictures, same thing here, this restroom is original to Hiawatha. And the after picture here, and I think these really kind of are a very nice touch. It looks very nice for the staff and students, and then also to the visitors of these restrooms. Lastly, this was the largest project that we did this summer. It was an HVAC upgrade at Grant Elementary. Included in this project was a new geothermal heating and cooling system, which also included an LED lighting and acoustical ceilings. This is kind of a difficult project to show pictures, but it is a project that the improvement is truly felt by the staff and the students in that building.
So, John, that's similar to what we would have done in the high schools, the geothermal, and then we've seen the LED lighting.
Correct, correct. Yep, similar. So all the high schools right now have the HVAC replacement done, the middle schools do. We did Hiawatha Elementary two years ago, and I believe this is the second elementary school in the district for the HVAC replacement. So this is just one of the classrooms. Like I said, there's not a lot to show on pictures. I could show you the picture of a heat pump, but I'd like to show you kind of the finished product of the classroom. And then that's also a picture there of the boiler room itself after the upgrade. Again, another classroom, LED lights, the new ceilings, and then that's looking down the hallway, and there were some projects in that picture that were done actually the previous summer. And the second part of the HVAC replacement is the window replacement, and those go hand in hand due to most of these buildings that we're doing HVAC replacements in had old window airs. So in order to get rid of those, we need to upgrade the windows, which also helps with our energy efficiency by doing that. So all the windows were replaced to an aluminum storefront window framing system, and all the doors were upgraded to either an aluminum door or an FRP door. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Mary?
Thanks, John. You've done a lot of work. We thank our voters for approving this Pebble for us and for our students in the district. I do notice that, just personally speaking, our signs are about this big that say "thank you." Can we make them a little bigger?
We can definitely look into that.
They kind of get lost in the lawn of some of our buildings and grounds, so, thank you.
Definitely.
Yep, just really quick, you know, thanks for all that good work. I mean, that's something that, as you mentioned, students, staff, community members, everybody sees those things. And when you see them, you're thinking more aesthetically, right? Oh, this looks nice. But from, you know, a functional perspective, a cost savings perspective, by those upgrades and improvements, I think it kind of reduces what our, you know, or improves our cost savings, but reduces what our costs would be for those buildings. So over time, that compounds, and it's exciting to see that. Thanks.
It's really nice to see the changes, the upgrades. I mean, I'm looking at these bathrooms, and then I was like, wow, these are very, very nice.
Thank you.
So if I could just kick out a couple of things. So we took this promise very seriously, and we're very transparent about it. So if you go to our website, you can see the list of projects that were promised out of these funds and the progress that we're making on them, and you can go line by line through them. So we've taken it very seriously, which direction from this board. And so that's a good news piece, that we're doing what we said we would with the money that was provided to us. And the second part is special shout-out to these two and their team about Grant, and special shout-out to the staff members at Grant, because if you'd have seen Grant, I don't know, 12 hours before they were going to begin, maybe it wasn't quite that tight. But I was in Grant the day before we were going to have students and the staff there, they rallied, and the staff, it was all hands on deck in a team effort. So thanks, a special thanks around the Grant project, so.
That's terrific. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, yeah, Gary?
Just, just real quick, as we move forward, who makes the decision, or where is the decision, the future projects on the Pebble? How are they filtered through and so on?
I think, it's a great question, and I think if you go to the website, you'll actually see years one through 10 of our promise. Every building has a specific list of projects that we've promised, and at every location, you'll see, usually in the foyer or in a prominent place, and Director Meisterling, hopefully it's a large size, I think they are fairly large size, showing all the specific projects that we've promised in this 10-year timeframe. Now, there are some that we'll bring forward because of perhaps urgency that we didn't realize when we had the initial 10-year promise laid out. So we've done a little bit of that, but, and then we've had to push a few back too by the same token. So, but we're really holding to that promise. And one final thing, and I don't want to steal any of Dr. Buck's thunder here, and all I'm saying this, and we have oversight from a committee of citizens who volunteered, and we call them the Facility Master Plan Oversight Committee, not to be confused with another Facility Master Plan Committee that's at work right now. And we meet on Monday, the October 2nd, and we're actually meeting with not only the Facility Oversight Committee, but also the Technology Oversight Committee that relies on the same pool of money, the saved resource monies, and we're together sitting down for the first time and appreciating what each of the other committees are doing, because we had people on the Facilities Committee saying, what are they doing with that money for technology? We thought we need to bring you together and have a conversation. So that oversight function is very, very important, and these change orders that were in the agenda for tonight will be seen by Oversight Committee on Monday, so.
That's what I was looking for, is that Oversight Committee and the work that they did, and I compliment some of that as volunteer, I'm sure, and we appreciate the community support for all the things we do. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much to both of you and your teams. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move now into the board work session, which today we will focus on the Facilities Master Plan Task Force and have an update. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Buck.
Thanks, President Laverty. So this is the other one, not to be confused with the one that was Steve was just describing. So Rob Schwartz is here with us this evening. We're about a year into this process, just by way of reminder, about a year into this process, we had a break in the action over summer break. We've met one time since then, and Rob is going to give us an update tonight on where things are with the Facilities Master Plan to this point.
Welcome back, Rob.
Thank you. Good evening. If you remember, we're talking about reimagining, re-envisioning, and then reinvesting in the community. And I think that's important. That tagline really has set the parameters for what this committee is working on. I have a lot of slides here, really to the benefit of anybody who ends up coming back to see this presentation, that they'll have this as a reference. Really, it helps document where we were August of last year, and then where we've gone, where we are. And I'm going to focus a little bit on a couple of things as we move through. I go to this next slide here, it's a little bit slow in response. But as it's clicking through, if you remember back towards May, you as a board said, hey, we think we need a little more time with the committee, we need to have some more public input from the community. And so, listening to what your recommendation was, we changed the process for Phase Two, where we added more committee meetings and three more public inputs. And we're working with district administration on what those public inputs could look like. They're going to be a little bit different, I imagine, than what we had for the previous six inputs, because we're now at the point of, when we get there, what do these scenarios potentially look like for you as a board to consider for this Facility Master Plan? So you can see here on this particular slide, this is what that new process looks like. The other thing that I wanted to focus on is, again, we have these belief statements that came out of the subcommittees. These are foundational to their understanding of how they're building on the scenarios. Budget information, you've heard a lot tonight from Steve's presentation. We have things about open enrollments, how that's changed over time, how that's impacting what we see for the number of students in the buildings. We have reasoning here for why the committee has been honing in for the elementaries to be four-section buildings of a size of about 600 students. So you can see a range of ideas here, from financial to academic to professional, things that really tie together that it's bigger than just money or bigger than the condition of the buildings. We have information that we showed you in the public inputs, as well as these board updates that show the existing Pebble costs, the leadership evaluation of the buildings, and how that relates to a total cost to bring these buildings to a certain condition for educational programming. We have a facility cost index, and this may be a newer slide for the board, that is a baseline, the red line that's vertical, is if we're at 50% of what the cost would be for a new building, how does that relate to the expenses to bring that facility up to the standard of expectations the district has? You'll see all but Viola Gibson are above that 50% FCI number.
Rob, what year is that data from? Is that current year information that this is based on, or is that from the Shivehattery?
This would be from the Shivehattery reports, and I think there may be, Steve might be able to, may have updated it with inflation and whatnot.
It's the same. Do you have a mic?
Just come here. The FCI concept is the same from Shivehattery. When it originated back in 2013, it has been updated, so these numbers are current.
Okay, thank you.
A great clarifying question. We also showed this to the committee, and this is the Pebble promise, and this shows that there's going to be greater need than the resource of the Pebble coming in. That's why you see the red line going towards zero. So again, this is- So again, this is to illustrate that there's more need than there is revenue to do the projects for each of these facilities. This next slide, we've showed you before, when we were at those last public inputs, we had three different scenarios that we're looking at, whether it was 13 four-section 600 buildings, or if there's three 450s and the rest 600 buildings, or if there's four 450 buildings and the rest 600, how you can see in relation to new buildings, which is the top line, which is either the 260, the 254, the 252, and then you can see the total cost for those elementary buildings, again, with the pebble and the leadership needs for those facilities. You can see what those costs are for, at that time, those three different scenarios. The next slide shows the work that Steve did that tried to illustrate, because we've been talking about brick and mortar funds, the pebble, the SAVE, but then there's also some of the things that could be done in this Facility Master Plan have an impact on the general operating fund. So the blue column represents what we have with our existing 21 elementary buildings. As we move to the orange, that's illustrating if we have 13 400, or 600 four-section buildings. So you can see the cost savings there in the general fund every year is about, I believe, 2.8 million, almost 2.9. And then if we have another scenario with some 450 buildings, you can see that it actually would cost the district more than what their general fund is to operate the 21 buildings right now. So again, just to help the committee understand that some of the decisions that we can do with the brick and mortar may have a positive or negative impact on the general operating funds of the district. This gets at your 5% of that, right? When we left in the June meeting, the committee was at having these 13 buildings at 600 students, four sections, and you can see some of the things that they had related to Metro, and the idea that it needs to be in a different space. That's where we left in June, so they had time to percolate and think and talk with different people in the community, and when we came back on September 14th, we had two activities that we honed in on for them, and I think they're going to be imperative as we move into the public inputs that will occur in November. And the first was an activity about sustainability, and everybody has a different view of what sustainability may mean, right? So we had this activity where they, brainstorming activity, where it was the initial words, do they think about sustainability as it relates to the school district? Each of the tables then, from those words, created their top five words that they thought would illustrate or define sustainability. When we come back to our next committee meeting, we're going to have more time about sustainability, because we want to give something back to you in this, in this recommendation that will help illustrate why this plan has gone the direction it is, and why it would support what this committee views sustainability to be. The other activity that we had was to start creating some of the scenario opportunities for what could happen with the district, and we were looking at the elementary, the middle school, and high school. And I know each time I come here, I talk a lot about the elementary, and I think it's because the elementary is where we have a lot of the greater challenges with what we need for capacity, what the building needs are for bringing them up to certain standards, and how that may start to impact some of the educational programming, some of the funding, and so on. But through this activity, we had different objectives, for them to understand where they left at June, and have some conversation at their tables, and then to build upon what are the other items that they think should be considered. And then we gave them kind of a wild card at each of the tables, and there were some resource limitations that they had. So is there SAVE funding? Do we have a diversion with the SAVE? Do we have a bond referendum? Is it at 270 for every 1,000? Is that 405, a range that Steve kind of established that would still be within the parameters legally of what you can bonds? I mean, some were combinations, and so from that, they were able to then start to prioritize what would the projects be that they felt would have the greatest impact on the educational achievements and day-to-day operation or experience those students have in the classrooms. So we're still working on those, and as we get to the next meeting, again, we're going to start to spell out, what did this mean, as you were looking at this from the different perspectives of funding constraints or, or opportunities? Once we get to Part Three, this is when you get the recommendation, and this is in December. What is the implementation timeline? What are the things that you may consider? Is it, do we have a better understanding of what SAVE extension may be? Do we talk about bond referendum? Do we do anything? Those are the things that when we get to Phase Three, we're not there yet because we don't yet know, what are the, the specific details of what this plan may look like? So with that, I open up to some questions or comments that you as the board may have.
First, Rob, I just want to say that I think on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank you for your work on this. I think all of us have been hearing a lot of feedback, a lot of input. You know, anytime that we're talking about children, facilities, tax dollars, neighborhoods, there's a lot of personal things at stake in those conversations, and I do want to commend you and the, the citizens of Cedar Rapids that are part of this committee that's been working on this for helping us think through this process. And I think as a board, you know, it's imperative that we as a board don't wait another 20 years. We've said this, you know, before. These can be difficult decisions, but we have the capacity, I think, right now to take this on and to think down the next 15, 20 years. So, so we appreciate that, and we know that it's not going to be an easy road necessarily to go down. There's a lot of factors, as we mentioned, so thank you for all of your work on this. And again, I think for the public, you mentioned early on, the, the board did extend this timeline, and we want to guarantee that we have enough space in the community, enough opportunities for people to give us their input. And so, the, the good work of Dr. Buck and your committee for extending that and figuring out a way for it to work, and we do appreciate that, and it would encourage the community to let us know their thoughts through this process. So when we get to that conversation, that's important, and I know a number of us on the board have been asking Dr. Buck about how will we communicate this? We need to make sure that there's effective communications, and we, we know that, Aqui, you're new on, on the administrative team, and so we'll be looking to you, I think, to make sure that that information is out there sooner than later. So with that, I'll turn it over in quick quacking here.
So what time, the next committee meeting you have at October the 10th? What, what time is that? And is it open to the public? Can they also attend the meeting?
I'll deflect that to Dr. Buck on what-
The committee meetings, or-
Their response maybe.
Is there a forum, or some additional forums?
No, those meetings are not open.
To the public, but where they could is if you look at your timeline, I'm doing it wrong, November, I moved the dates, thank you, lots of people wanting to help, that's good. So there will be an opportunity in, in November, three different dates, we'll have public conversations about where we are on the plan and receive feedback on, on the plan at that point.
So that's got to be posted on the Cedar Rapids website? Okay, okay.
So is there a format determined for those yet, or is it still kind of up in the air? Will it be like the last round, where a different night at a different school?
My guess is it will be a different night at different schools, if I had to guess, but we have not yet completely determined that. We are, we are listening to feedback from the community, so just being completely transparent, the first, the first survey we put out, people were frustrated by that survey. Its construction was too complex and difficult to, I mean, questions like, do you value professional learning communities as a correlate to understanding why that matters for facilities? And come to find out, it does. When you have four-section elementaries, you're more likely to build a high-quality professional learning community, because you have additional people in the grid level with whom to work. But for the community to draw a bright line between that and this conversation, probably not realistic and fair, right? So we've heard feedback on that survey, and then I would say the second round, the survey, we've received feedback that people felt like we were trying to lead them in a direction, and the intent wasn't to lead in direction, it was to, to receive feedback, but we also want to be sensitive to that. So I'm not sure where the survey lands at this point, if it, if we would get the power out of it that we intend relative to kind of how it's gone on the first two surveys. And so my guess is, and then we also heard at the second committee meeting, people felt like they weren't given a variety of options. So if you remember what that was like, and this maybe is a longer answer than you intend, I'm just trying to acknowledge, I'm just trying to acknowledge the transparency of, we are listening to community feedback on what those experiences are like, and to what extent can we improve the experience for our, our community members in this next go-around. So we'll try to construct that in a way that's guided by the feedback from those first two experiences to receive feedback that we hope to from our community.
And if I could comment on the public input sessions, discussions that we have, I think some of the things that we've heard that we're going to address in these next is, there may be reason for having general questions, maybe some breakouts, you can get a little bit deeper, but we're, we're looking at doing some things a little bit differently, so the community that do come will be engaged in different ways that they're educated, but then if they have questions, that maybe the general people that are there will, will have a context of what those answers might be, because they may have similar questions.
Other comments? Gary?
I have three. First of all, I think the last time that we had an update, I asked about the middle school replacement cost. I know it wasn't a part of, but I was interested in, I think at that time you said that it wasn't, the replacement cost was more than what the upgrade cost was, so it wasn't, wasn't factored in. But I would just be, I would be interested personally of what the, the actual cost, estimated cost to replace a middle school would be, if we're looking at the future. And the second question, when we're looking at the savings moving from the, the current number of buildings down to, say, 13 or 10 or whatever, one of the cost savings would be in administrative. So, does that, does that indicate that if we're having a building now of 300, that administrator is underutilized? And I, I guess what I'm, I'm getting at is if we have a 600 building, 600 population, would we have more than one administrator that would, that would go? So that the true savings might not be as, as accurate.
That's a great question, Director Anhalt. The 21 elementaries that we have now are largely directed and led by a single elementary principal. With 13 elementaries, we actually have a full-time associate elementary principal, so we're over utilizing, then maybe that's not the right term, we are certainly, I'm sure, the elementary principals are working very hard, and I think we all realize that they're working very hard in their buildings currently, and we recognize that if we had a building on size of 600 students, we would need more support for the principals. So even with an increase of administrative, direct administrative support for those elementaries, overall, we save just under $3 million per year in operating costs related to personnel and all the other unique costs associated with running an elementary building, including utility costs.
Thank you. So in those estimates, you were, you were figuring in that there would be some additional administrative help in those buildings?
Absolutely. We no longer have a traveling art, music, PE teacher. They are dedicated to that building. We have a dedicated counselor in all the buildings. It is a much improved situation instructionally and supportive of administration's needs.
As a former physical education teacher, and what I saw with our physical education and art programs, it was the same. We were told that we didn't have a, a 300, wouldn't fully staff an art, music, PE, and drifting a little bit, but the same thing with administrative. I don't want to belittle our, our, our principals. I know they do more than yeoman's work, but I also want to support what our specials teachers were doing to, even in those buildings, that they weren't underutilized. I have one, one more, I don't know, question. It did, the committee, Sioux City, from what I understand, is deep into this process of, of doing some upgrading in their facilities in similar direction, I think, to what we're talking about. And they've undergone some, some building on sites, in some cases, where they've kept a building open and then had the space to build onsite while they, they continued in the, the older building and then, and then were able to move into it without a disruption of services. But there were also other, having to find ground and a larger space for a larger building. I just wondered if the committee has, as I said, they've been at it for quite a while, if you've had a chance, or if they've had a chance to look at what Sioux City is doing?
The, the committee themselves, unless they went there on their own, know on the Sioux City. As far as what we know about Sioux City, we've had conversations with their district administration, your district administration, to talk about lessons they've learned. But committee members did have the opportunity, those that went down to Kansas City, to see two urban districts that did that very same thing, and they, they were able to visualize the brand-new building, and six feet away, you could see the existing building waiting for it to be demolished as they just moved over to the new site. So we've given them some opportunities to see that, and we would also, with Sioux City, they more than can go to those, that school district and see those facilities.
So could I give a couple of follow-ups to that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so one of the first follow-ups is the, the $3 million, there's been some amount of misunderstanding, and we could do a better job of communicating, so I'm not, the $3 million, we are not intending that as a cost savings, we're intending that as a reinvestment in our schools. So what we would really hope would happen with those $3 million is that they would get reinvested in our schools, additional teaching support. When I'm in buildings, one of the two or three things I hear the most is, we need more people to engage in this work in authentic ways to better serve kids, and that $3 million represents hiring additional people working directly with kids. And sort of a correlate to that is, there's worry then that people would be losing their jobs. One, if we can reinvest like we intend, that would be our first desire. There will be some of these jobs that transition, but we're talking about a 15-ish year time horizon. So we believe we could naturally, naturally through attrition over 15 years, this is a situation that would resolve itself over time. So this isn't a, we're going to do some amount of reduction immediately, this is a 15-year conversation. And then, so I think that's important. The second follow-up is, as it relates to spaces, one of the concerns we've heard in feedback from the community is that we intend to either, one, put all of our schools on one site, and that is the Morgan Creek site. I can tell you as sure as I'm sitting here, that will never happen. We own 37 acres or something at Morgan Creek, and that's not anywhere near the right size, and doesn't make sense that we would bus every elementary kid in the city over to Morgan Creek. So I don't know whether that emerged, and trying to be respectful, but I can tell you that's not going to happen. The second thing is this idea that we're going to build a, sort of a ring of schools around the city and not be sensitive to our urban core or our core neighborhoods. And I will tell you, if you look what Rob had on the screen, every one of the places that we're talking about having a replacement school is an existing school site. So we're not even in a conversation about obtaining land as a committee, we're talking about putting schools back in place. And while I have the microphone for just one more second, I was on the phone with Sioux City's superintendent early last week, talking about a, sort of a separate conversation that was powerful and lightning. But I've talked to him before about this, and they did a little different strategy than, than we're talking about doing. Their strategy was, they recognized they had an aging inventory, and one of the slides that we didn't spend a lot of time on, but that slide with the red line is going to negative, our cost to do unanticipated maintenance is accelerating because we have old schools? So can you get that to that slide? So that red line right there is terribly important, whatever that is, FY '26. We hit a point where we get over-center on our ability to maintain our facilities. So while we don't necessarily have to do something today, we recognize something has to be done. And so as Sioux City looked at this challenge for them, because they had an aging infrastructure, much like we did, their strategy was, they started with a part-of-town, and Paul Gosman, their superintendent, can correct- their superintendent, can correct me, and he'd be willing to if you knew Paul. They started with a different strategy, which was, they went and replaced the school. So like in our case, you could just pick one, and I'm going to do something risky here, but if you look at the, if you look at the chart, I'm just trying to be transparent with the public, that this committee has thought about a lot of things, core neighborhoods, our kids, make sure they're well-served. So if you go to Coolidge, Coolidge is the most discrepant in terms of need. So what Sioux City did, and their strategy is, they would have looked at a chart like this, they would have gone to Coolidge, and they'd have said, hey, Coolidge families, we would like to build you a new school. How do you feel, how do you feel about us building a new school on an existing site? And you know what they said? Holy cow, we'd like to have a new school. So they build a new school. And you know what that created? Demand. So then they went to the next neighborhood, the next school, and said, hey, we'd like to build you a new school. How would you feel about building a new school? And you know what they said? Gosh, we'd like one too. So, their strategy in Sioux City was, yes, they're replacing inventory, but they're doing it in a manner that is a little bit different than what we're trying to do. So we're in sort of this, and those that hear me speak often know I only know like three things. One of them is, we're in sort of a Chinese pull toy activity right now. If you're familiar with those finger toy, so you pull and pull, and the more you pull, the more difficult it is. You have to actually move your fingers together. We have to figure out a way in our community to move our fingers together in a way that makes sense for the community, to replacing an aging inventory, to provide even better places for our kids to learn and our staff members to work. And in addition to that, we could create community hubs that don't currently exist. So if you go to our aging schools now, and this is no criticism of our aging schools, they were designed in an era when, once you were in the building, you were in the building, right? There isn't, modern schools, when they are built, they are built designed to be locked-off areas so the community can have lots of access to them. So what we could transition to in a plan like we're describing and thinking about is, instead of thinking about it as twenty-one existing elementaries, we're talking about potentially thirteen community hubs or thirteen community anchors, where you can set it up so the gym has restrooms built right in alongside it, and as soon as school day is done, you can lock that off in the community through keycard access, can have access, and suddenly now we have thirteen more publicly available gyms than we had before this process started. So I'm talking longer than I intended, other than to say, I worry that the community thinks this committee is sort of huddled down and not taking into account a whole bunch of things. And what I would tell you is, this community has talked about, where's the heat map of our, our children that are most likely to be represented in a socially, economically disadvantaged way, and how do we make sure we take care of them in particular? How do we make sure we don't lose track of our core neighborhoods? How do we enrich and enliven our city through community hubs? How do we, and this board's direction, around SAVE. So another thing that's guiding the work of this committee is, at the last time Rob was here, there was general sort of guidance from this group that our first priority for funding would be SAVE. If we know that the extension of SAVE is the first priority of the board, that's about two-hundred-and-twelve million dollars, Steve's going to cringe because I'm going to say a number, plus or minus five million, you know, that's why he runs-
Is that close?
Yeah, that's why, that's why he runs the books and I don't, but if we knew we had about two-hundred-and-twelve million dollars through a SAVE extension, then in what way does that impact the conversation this committee? That's part of the scenario work we did very more, much more organically the last time we were together. So, I, I didn't intend to say this much, other than, I just want to reassure the community, we are listening, we are trying to attend to a number of dimensions of this, it is complex, and we need to do something, so.
Thank you. I think all of-
Ask another question.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, definitely.
I think you covered it.
Other, so Gary?
Just thank you for that dialogue, Dr. Buck. I, I just, along with that, because I've been, personally, I've been saying that these are, these schools are not Cedar Rapids Community Schools, our district, but they're community buildings. They belong to the community, and so I think as we move forward, we need to continue. And in that vein, I think we need to continue to have dialogue with, with our community, with our city government, because they all have, they have an impact on the, on the total community. So I, I would encourage us, as we move forward, and maybe after November, and we have a new look at maybe our, our city government, we re, recommit to that.
I think even before November, it might be good. Some of us have already started that conversation. We look at the North, Northwest Recreation Center, you know, this district, working with the city council, and I know, Mary, you were instrumental in trying to get some of that done. That is a great example of that process, and we can leverage the tax dollars on both sides, benefit senior citizens, benefit kids, community members, after-school hours on weekends, and have a much better facility for our kids when they are in school. So, all the things that this city council has been talking about for a long time, and I, you know, in those just side conversations, every one of the candidates that's running that seem to be very supportive of that. So I would encourage the public, again, give us feedback, but also continue that conversation with those that are running for city council in Cedar Rapids. And we're also represented by Hiawatha, and a little bit of Robbins, and some other areas in, in Rowland County as well. So, think about those, those elected officials in this conversation, and think about those tax dollars and benefits that we might join forces on, so, thank you.
So can I give a quick example?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
As a way to amplify public dollars, if you start to build a new school with a new gymnasium, the city, if we work together, could come and add another ten feet, pay to add another ten feet on each side of that, and add a little bit of seating, and all of a sudden you have spaces to do something different than you otherwise could have. And honestly, as a property taxpayer in the community, I'd be excited to see the city and the school working together to amplify the opportunities for kids in our community. So, there are ways, it doesn't have to be big crazy things, it can be things that could happen pretty quickly and reasonably, so.
Any questions?
One of the things, I'm, I'm going to go here, so I don't know. We've heard from a number of folks, and there's a committee in, in town talking about historic preservation, and, and we have some beautiful, old, very old, over a hundred years old elementary schools. And I want to recognize that, that they have had a voice in this, and that, that we have listened, and from what I'm gathering, we're not necessarily talking about just knocking down buildings and buying new land and putting, like Dr. Buck said, putting brand-new buildings out on the outskirts of town and ignoring these grand-old elementary schools. So is, is that the case? And how might, you know, a historic building fit into the, the mix here, if at all? I don't know if the committee has had that conversation or not, but-
We have, and let me answer to that, and Dr. Buck, you can, can join in as well. What, the committee members that went on the tour, specifically those down to Kansas City, i- if there was a historic building, you know, that had all of these different relationships, connections to the community, they would honor that past by taking some of the higher-profile architectural elements, that may be, some, some had gargoyles, some they would take out the gym floor and put it in a new repurposed way in the building. So, there's ways, there's ways that you can honor what the building is in the new building to, to bring new traditions, but yet honor what awesome things happens.
So, so part of my understanding too, though, if, if there was an old building, you know, from, we went down this path, I think, post-flood with Harrison, I think we had those conversations, people wanted to save that, it would have meant totally gutting, basically redoing the outs, leaving the outside but fixing it so that it was stable, gutting the inside, adding all-new HVAC, adding all-new walls, adding all-new utilities in there. And the cost, and I'm looking, thinking back to that fifty percent line, so the cost would be a lot greater, from what I understand, to do that sort of renovation versus building new? Is that accurate?
Yeah, that, that's what the architects have indicated. There's generally more cost with what you just described.
So that's, that's a decision too, and I don't know, the board, we haven't gotten into this discussion, but at some point, the community in our public conversations needs to decide, is that extra money, and I don't know how many millions of dollars probably that is more, is that of value to us as a community, to us as a school district, to spend that extra money to save those buildings? Or are there opportunities to repurpose those buildings? Is there another use for them? Or the community decides, we really would value what you were talking about, these newer buildings that, you know, had some historical preservation of some of the, the pieces of those older buildings? So, I'm hoping in this conversation with the community coming up, that that's a real key part of it, because there is a strong historical value to many of our buildings, and we've lost a number of them, but at the same time, I think we want to do what's best for the kids and respect the taxpayer dollars. And if taxpayers think that, you know, preserving older buildings is what we should be doing, and they're willing to spend the money, make sure you tell us that and why you think that in this process.
If I could just add a caveat to that, I think, I think we could thumb wrestle over the dollar amount between retrofitting twenty-one elementaries and building thirteen-ish new. I think those numbers aren't that far off from one another. So, and I don't know what they are sitting here today, but I, my guess is you could get the, they're probably fairly close. So, one of the things that's occurring in this conversation that makes it additionally complex is, let, let's say for the sake of what I'm going to say next, that the amount, dollar amount is very close to one another. If you keep twenty-one elementaries and retrofit them, all of the challenges that we currently face with those schools, from staffing inside, uneven section sizes, shared, shared specials teachers, if you're an ELL kid, you're less likely to go to your home school because we have to aggregate to get enough students together to support them. If you're a specials needs child, you're less likely to go to your home school. If Suzie Buck, my older sister, was in a multi-grade classroom two different times at Van Buren forty years ago, so we've had a solution about solving class size issues in, you know, in Cedar Rapids for at least forty years, where we do grade blending, which is not the preferred thing if I were to listen to parents closely. So, there's, so this is where the two conversations sort of slide past each other, when you get into the straight money conversation, because the straight money conversation is, I don't know that there's that much difference in total cost, but it doesn't solve a whole lot of things that the committee has decided are worth trying to solve as a part of this process. And so, that's where, if you receive feedback that people say, if it's about the same amount of money, why not just retrofit the, the existing schools? They're not also embedded in a year-long conversation about what we think would be best for kids and staff members to deliver on these other parts of it. And it's counterintuitive, as those schools get larger, you're more likely to have evened-out section size. So I'll give you, this is, these are the things that are sort of interesting that are worth saying publicly, because I know people watch this at home. Hi, Mom. And, that's a little joke. And, so if you were to look at our kindergarten classes this year, and you were to take all of the kindergarten students in the district divided by the total number of kindergarten teachers, I'm not talking Title I, I'm not talking special education teachers, I'm not talking any teachers other than kindergarten teachers, our class size is what we desire it to be within one-tenth of a percent of total kids. So we are investing in class size. We value class size. And I don't know what that number is, is twenty-one or twenty-two, somebody could-
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. If you go to first grade, it's also twenty-one?
Kindergarten is twenty-one. First grade, third grade is twenty-one.
Okay. So if you take those numbers she just said, and take the total number of kids at any grade level divided by the total number of teachers, we are within one-tenth of a percent of where we would hope to be in class size. So we are investing in class size. Where that gets hinky is when you start to put it into small schools, and so if five or six more kids come in a grade level, it throws off section size. Section size is the number of students in a classroom, the section. So, so what happens when, and this is one of the parts of this conversation that was driven in the committee, if you get to four sections in a building, you have more places to even out section size in that building, and you're more likely to have even smaller class sizes in line with what we desire for class size. So, yes, I appreciate feedback from the community in the context of understanding this, what people I think perceive, and what we know to be the case aren't always exactly the same, and we have a role in communicating that, so they do understand why we arrived at the conversation we have in front of us tonight, so.
And to arm you as a board, if you go to page twenty, and you look at that first column, it's about fifteen million dollars difference between the, the renovation of the buildings, and then if you had thirteen brand-new four-section buildings of six hundred students, and then what Dr. Buck was illustrating with basically the general fund, page twenty-one, when you see the difference, when you come down to the blue column and you see the operating funds for the twenty-one buildings of about fifteen nines, basically sixteen, and then we go to the orange shaded, the middle columns, you can see the savings of about two-point-nine every year, which, again, gets at what Dr. Buck was saying with the brick and mortar, the decisions we make there have an impact on what other investments you can make in programming in each of the buildings.
So that, that two-point-nine million dollars in estimated annual savings, that's not included in the fifteen-million-dollar difference between building new and retrofitting, right?
No.
That's additional, and so what you're saying is, that money, the intention is to be reinvested into additional staff to support kids at the classroom level, which-
Yeah.
I've been on the board now, this is starting eleven years, and we continue to talk about trying to invest, you know, at the classroom level as much as possible in redirecting funds, which are limited, so.
Yeah, so the two slides that are especially important, sorry, I didn't mean to step on the end of that, President Leibert. The two slides that are especially important that represent two different important concepts. Slide nineteen, that red line is a facilities issue, so this is facility dollars, and where that conversation is headed, the capital conversation. Page twenty-one is the operating cost. So we have facility costs, and we have operating costs, and our facility costs are going to at some point overwhelm existing inventory if we don't do something. And we have an opportunity to recoup almost three million dollars annually if we do this to put back into classrooms from an operations side. So there's two different important concepts in, working in tandem with each other, so.
I just want to-
Hey Ken, I appreciate the context of the dialogue that you shared with us, because it's incumbent upon each and every one of us to not allow it to just be a money conversation or just be a categorized conversation. It's much broader than that. This will get difficult. People don't like change. This is a big change for our community, but the more we engage in dialogue outside of the meetings that you're having with our stakeholders, we have to have these same conversations in our work, in our rotaries, and on, on other committees that we serve on. So, I appreciate that, and every time we talk about it, we should bring these same topics up.
And if I could just do one more? Man, I'm like, I have wanted to talk about this, right? Do you sense it?
I'll give you some grace on this one.
Thank you. I'm on my third paperclip, so each time I talk, I move a paperclip over in my pocket and then, yeah.
He needs a little grace.
I do need grace at times.
All right.
Now I've forgotten my point. Oh, no. The, and one of the things I, I would just say to folks as an encouragement, so one of the things we've heard is, some of our buildings have district, different historical value in the community. So can I just give an example at the risk of giving examples? So if you were to look at page twenty-two, can you just take us to twenty-two, and you see sort of where the conversation is, is the group right now? So you take a, we have learned that Wright School is a prairie-style, long, yellow brick, unique to the, to the era in which it was built, and most places didn't invest in that style of brick, and I'm not giving the honor that it's due, other than to know, I'm being respectful about what it is. If ten or twelve years from now, because you have to keep in mind, this is a fifteen or twenty-year plan, if ten or twelve years from now, we get to the point where we're talking about doing something at the Wright site, by Wright, I mean Wright Brothers site, not Correct, and we recognize the features of that school, and we also recognize we need a six-hundred-student community hub there, that I believe is going to be an opportunity for our community to say, could we keep the front facade of Wright because of its architectural styling, and build new school off of the back of it? Because if you, if you're familiar with the Wright site, there would be space to do that. And then really honor that this Wright architecture is important to us for what- And then really honor that this Wright architecture is important to us, for whatever reasons, and I'm trying to articulate them, but not well, and at the same time, a recognition that all the other parts of a school, a six-hundred-student facility that make it great, could be accessed here. So, what I don't, what I would hope is, our community doesn't hear this as an all-or-nothing conversation, but rather, as the plan unfolds over a decade and a half or two decades, we can make smart choices for our community and its history, and in schools where that doesn't make sense, and I don't mean to pick on Coolidge, but if you look at Coolidge, part of the reason why it has all the need that it does is, it's just an old school from the fifties, whatever it is, sixties, and it doesn't have architectural features. It's just, it's the kind of place that, if you build a new school behind it and turn that back into the playground, that's probably appropriate for that school. So, and for our Coolidge families, I only choose Coolidge because it's on the list as the greatest need school, so.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Other comments or questions? Anything? All right. We thank you for all of this conversation, the work that you and the committee, the citizens are putting into this effort, and as a board, we'll look forward to getting more information as we move into the public phase again of this, and eventually in December, some recommendations to the board, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we just want to remind the board that there is a board calendar in your packet. There is an evaluation for tonight's meeting, and Jennifer, we can go through that and help you with that a little bit. And with that, the meeting is adjourned, so thank you for being here.